Alright. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Little, Mayor of the District of North Vancouver, and I'm going to call to order this public hearing for Tuesday, June 13th at seven o'clock. We'll note that there are actually two public hearings scheduled in our calendar tonight, and so they're going to run consecutively. The first one will be 100 Forrester, followed by the street number 1541 to 1557 Bond Street. So that public hearing will take place as soon as we've concluded the first public hearing, 100 Forrester. I will just note before we get going, I do have a bit of a script to read. Public hearing is a quasi judicial setting, and so we have to follow some fairly strict rules. Some of the rules I get to make up, but most of the rules are dictated to us. I did want to comment that this meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion. So that means all members of the public, the council or staff can participate either in person or virtually throughout the course of the hearing. And so in that regard, with councillor Beck joining us virtually and all other members of council here present, you have the entire council participating in the public hearings this evening. I'm going to go through our script now here. This is the script for 100 Forrester Street zoning bylaw amendments. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act and is being held in a hybrid meeting format, meaning there is a combination of in-person electronic participation by some or all members of council staff and the public. The chair has established the following rules for this hearing. We will go through the established speakers list, and at the end of the speakers list, the chair may call for any other speakers not on the speakers list. You will have five minutes to address council for a first time. Begin your remarks to council by stating your name. After everyone who wishes to speak has spoken once, speakers will then be allowed one additional five-minute opportunity. Any additional presentations will only be allowed at the discretion of the chair. Please do not repeat information from your previous presentations and ensure your comments remain focused on the bylaw under consideration this evening. If you have provided a written submission, there's no need to read it, as it will have already been seen by council. You may summarize or briefly reiterate the highlights of your submission, but ensure your comments pertain to the bylaw under consideration at this hearing. All members of the audience are asked to be respectful of one another as diverse opinions are expressed. Council wishes to hear everyone's views in an open and impartial forum. Some important notes about public hearings. One, the council is here to listen to the public, not to debate the merits of the bylaw. Council may ask clarifying questions. The clerk has a binder containing documents and submissions related to the bylaw which council has received and which you are welcome to review. This is available on the table next to the door and online at dnv.org/agenda. Everyone at the hearing will be provided an opportunity to speak. If necessary, we will continue the hearing on a second night. At the conclusion of the public input, council may request further information from staff, which may or may not require an extension to the hearing, or council may close the hearing, after which council should not receive further new information from the public. Finally, please note that this hearing is being held via Zoom and recorded in accordance to the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And now I'll turn to the clerk to introduce the bylaw.
Thank you, through your worship. District of North Vancouver rezoning bylaw 1426 by law 8626. Purpose of bylaw. By law 8626 proposes to amend the zoning bylaw to create an exception to section 403A, uses prohibited in all zones. Subsection 1F, the manufacture of hazardous materials, to allow the manufacturing liquefaction and storage of hydrogen with a maximum storage capacity of 180,000 US gallons on a portion of 100 Forrester Street.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to call on staff for their presentation. Staff will provide an opportunity of up to 15 minutes to make a presentation, followed by the applicant. So at this point, I'm going to welcome Tamsin Guppy, Development Planner, up front.
Hit slideshow. There we go. And so, good evening. I'm here to present on behalf of staff. I've, can you guys see my slides yet?
At this moment, we can see the speakers list, but we're going to switch that over.
Thank you. So this evening, we've coordinated our presentations so that we'll be as concise as possible, but still hopefully hit all of the key pieces of information we want to cover this evening. So I'll be presenting on behalf of staff, providing a bit of an overview and context and details on the bylaw itself. The applicant, H-Tech, led by Colin Armstrong, will provide information, more detailed information on the proposal and the role of hydrogen in fighting the, in fighting climate change. Then we'll have a presentation by the qualified professional Doug McCutcheon, speaking to the risk, the quantitative risk assessment. Oh, and in total, we hope to be done in about 15 to 20 minutes. So really trying to keep it going this evening. So the clerk has very kindly gone over the bylaw in just a little bit more detail there. So this is a text amendment to permit the hydrogen liquefaction and storage facility, and it's being proposed by H-Tech to capture the hydrogen that's already produced onsite by ERCO Worldwide. And then by capturing it, then to process it, liquefy it and store it, ready for distribution. The site shown, the site is in the heart of Maplewood. And yes, you can see my mouse, okay? So the legal law is outlined in black and is a 19, 17, sorry, a little more nervous than I realized, 19 acre site, of which only the red portion is the subject of the bylaw tonight. And that's the five acre site in the southwest corner. Looking at it in plan view, this is our OCP amendment. And I know, I can't see my notes, that's probably what's throwing me here. This is the OCP map, and it shows the site again outlined in black, and then the subject site, outlanded in red. And you can see that it is only a portion of the site. It's in the heart of Maplewood. And for scale purposes, it's about 400 meters south of Dollerton, or about half a kilometer from the closest residential property. So turning to the regulatory context, this proposal is in keeping with the official community plan. By investing in an industrial site and intensifying the use of industrial land, we are supporting our economic development goals and helping build, help and work towards job creation. In addition to that, though, this proposal is not just any manufacturing plant, but a plant that is producing a product, hydrogen, that can then be used as an alternative to gasoline and diesel, which are GHT-producing products. So this is moving us as a municipality closer to our goals of climate action. So again, in terms of the context, the site is zoned industrial. And again, industrial zoning permits manufacturing. And the site is in three development permit areas, form and character, energy and water conservation and GHT reduction and flood hazard. In addition to the municipal regulations, the applicant team will also be going through a standard variety of permits and applications in the provincial and federal context, probably most noticeably notably those by the technical safety of BC, which, which regulate things like the operating plant permits for the plant itself. Now, why are we here this evening, given that it's industrial zoning? As the clerk mentioned, we are proposing a text amendment to the general regulations section of the zoning bylaw. So our zoning bylaw has this section of, which prohibits a whole variety of uses, mostly to do with farming. But number F is the manufacture of hazardous substances, where our definition of hazardous substances includes compressed and liquefied gases. So it is this piece of the zoning bylaw that allows us to do a site analysis anytime a proposal comes forward. That may be something we want to dig into further, instead of just automatically supporting it. So that turns us to the question of, is there a hazard? And if so, is there one that we can support? And so the applicant hired Doug McCutcheon and Associates, and they provided a study. Doug is going to be resenting in a few minutes when we'll speak to this in more detail. We have worked with Doug, who did the Maplewood study for us, looking at the risks associated with the variety of industrial uses in this area, including Chemtrade, the chlorine plant next door. And his study is unequivocal and comes back and says, the report confirms that the proposed use meets the Canadian safety standards for risk as set by the Canadian Society for Chemical Engineering Process Safety Management Division, Major Industrial Accidents Council of Canada, also known as the MIAC guidelines, something that we've used many times in the past. To ensure that we understood this report and that, and to really ensure that it is saying exactly what it means to say, we also hired SLR consultants to do a thorough review of the McCutcheon study. We look, we asked them to review the methodology, the findings, to look at any knock-on impacts, cumulative impacts, and to confirm the risk criteria standards. The two authors who worked on this study similar, are similarly experienced. John Relight has over 40 years of experience in this field, and James Hartshorn has over 25 years of experience, both of them dealing with risk management, with process safety, with emergency response planning, and in James's case, also with environmental risk management. Their thorough review of the Doug McCutcheon study tells us that the study can be relied on, is reasonable, defensible, and confirms that it meets, that the proposal meets Canada's safety guidelines. So turning to the actual text amendment, that's the subject of tonight's public hearing. It's written, this is the exact wording of it, and it's proposing an exemption to that clause that prohibits hazardous substances for the manufacturing liquefaction of storage of hydrogen on that portion of the lands highlighted with the black dash line, and I've got to zoom in in a moment, and located on 100 Forrester Street with a maximum onsite storage capacity of 180,000 US gallons of hydrogen. So this bylaw is very site-specific. It limits the type of gas, the location of the storage, sorry, the location of the facility and the maximum capacity of storage. And again, that's the, the map that's attached to the bylaw, referencing not the entire legal parcel, but just that portion, the five acres that will be used for the hydrogen plant. So in terms of next steps, should the bylaw process be successful, then the applicant will proceed with a development permit application later this year, after they further refine their drawings. So now, thank you for my part, and I will turn it over to the applicant team. So I will just escape my slides and bring up yours.
Thank you, Ms. Guppy.
This is working. Thank you. My name is Colin Armstrong. I am one of the co-founders and CEO of H-Tech. We call it H-Tech Hydrogen Technology Energy Corporation. So thank you for all for considering our rezoning application. And I would definitely like to express our deepest appreciation for the District of North Vancouver's staff's support and responsiveness, particularly. I'm joined here today by Sabina Russell, who is our VP of Clean Fuels at H-Tech, and Melissa McKinnon, who is our Director of Liquefaction Assets. So a little bit of background. H-Tech was founded on the North Shore in 2004, and we're a leading local hydrogen energy solutions company that designs, builds, owns and operates hydrogen production and fueling station facilities, primarily with the goal of decarbonizing transportation markets. I'm actually a long-term resident of the North Shore and have been working on ways to convert the waste hydrogen produced at ERCO's facility for many years, right back to when we founded H-Tech in 2004. H-Tech established and operates Canada's first hydrogen fueling station network, including the station at Westview, just a couple blocks from here. Today, H-Tech's network consists of five stations with another 20 under development across the country. H-Tech Station Network has executed over 15,000 safe fills, and I thought it was worth noting that globally, there have been over 50 million hydrogen vehicle fueling fills that have been done safely. The ERCO liqueifier project is aligned with both the BC and Canadian hydrogen strategies. The federal government's hydrogen strategy for Canada was released in 2020 and announced that the development of a low-carbon hydrogen economy is a strategic priority for the country. The focus on hydrogen is creating significant opportunities for local companies like H-Tech, as well as others like Ballard, as well as increasing the demand for hydrogen, which is currently restricting hydrogen vehicle deployments in California, as well as here in British Columbia. This project will add 15,000 kilograms per day of much-needed economical low-carbon 10-g hydrogen to BC. Put in context, that's about the same as 15,000 gallons of gasoline. The hydrogen for the proposed project will support H-Tech's growing station network and rapid adoption of zero-emission cars, trucks and buses locally. H-Tech is committed to the highest standard of safety for our employees, contractors and the public. Safety is paramount to everyone at H-Tech, and the company operates on a safety purse mentality. We have an integrated health, safety and environmental program to ensure facilities are designed, built and operated to minimize risks and incidents. H-Tech employees always treat hydrogen with the utmost respect.
Well, for us, this project is really about scaling up the use of hydrogen as a transportation fuel, and it aligns with H-Tech's mission to fuel the drive to hydrogen. Before I joined H-Tech, I had the chance to work with the Government of Canada, as well as the BC government, on their hydrogen strategies and the foundational study work that underpin them. And all of the modeling and analysis came to one conclusion, which is we can't get to net zero without hydrogen in our energy mix. And we also can't hit our zero-emission vehicle mandates without hydrogen as a transportation fuel. And if you look at Canada's emissions profile today, about 24% of our emissions relate to transportation and on-road transportation. And of that, around 60% has to do with heavy-duty vehicles. And hydrogen fuel cell electric vehicles really shine in that heavy-duty segment. They offer fast fueling time, and you can store a lot of energy onboard these vehicles that have a big job to do, because hydrogen tends to be very light. Our proposed facility is a liquid facility, in part because as these heavy-duty vehicles expand on the roads, they need a lot of fuel, and we need to be able to move it around efficiently. We need to have smaller footprint at the fueling stations that provide fuel for them as well. In addition to heavy-duty vehicles, you see a lot of other vehicles listed on the sidebar there. In fact, two of us drove here in a passenger vehicle, so those are on the road today. They're commercially available, they're reliable, and they're safe, and they're very fun to drive. You can ask my two teenage daughters that, because they always try to steal my car instead of our Subaru Outback. Anyway, this isn't just our view of the world. You know, there's a lot of major vehicle OEMs developing hydrogen vehicles. You can see down at the bottom, the logos of some of the big ones, and I'm sure you've heard of from Toyota and Hyundai, to Paccar and Kenworth, who are big truck manufacturers, and BMW, who's coming out with a new SUV. So as Colin said, right now, we have constrained fuel supply in British Columbia, so we can't release more vehicles on the road here that are powered by hydrogen. And the purpose of this project is really to have more fuel available so we can deploy more vehicles and so we can hit our decarbonization goals.
There are a few different ways to make hydrogen, but one of the most economical and environmentally friendly methods is to capture waste by product hydrogen from existing chemical plants. There are only a few of these plants in North America, and one of them is ERCO Sodium Chlorate Plant at 100 Forrester Street. ERCO passes the current across a brine solution and creates sodium chloride. And in the process, hydrogen is created, a lot of hydrogen, actually. As we mentioned, it's almost 15,000 kilograms daily, which is enough to support approximately 30,000 fuel cell cars or up to 500 heavy-duty vehicles. H-Tech proposes to capture, purify and liquefy this economical, low-carbon intensity hydrogen to meet the growing market demand for green alternatives, converting what is now waste into a clean transportation fuel. This project will demonstrate how existing and emerging markets can work together in BC to cost-effectively transform energy production and usage. Liquid hydrogen has been produced and commercially used for decades. However, this will be the first hydrogen liqueifier in the Pacific Northwest, bringing much-needed hydrogen to an industry-leading region. Last November, H-Tech entered into an agreement with ERCO to purchase its industrial land at 100 Forrester Street. ERCO will lease back a portion of the land on a long-term basis to continue its sodium chloride manufacturing facilities. H-Tech is proposing to use, as Tamsin pointed out earlier, the five-acre portion of the site, which we have indicated in the yellow dashed line, southwest of the ERCO plant, to build our hydrogen liquefaction facility. We are looking to complete the rezoning process and land acquisition by the fall. We've hired a leading EPC firm to complete front-end engineering of the plant, allowing us to submit the development permit before the end of the year. In 2024, we'll focus on completing the design and submitting the building permit. In 2025, construction will begin, and we will be operational in early 2026. Building community is very important to us. People who work at H-Tech have a passion for the environment and seek every opportunity to share this passion with everyone around them. So far this year, we've had several occasions to engage with a variety of stakeholders in the district. I won't run through the full list, but we, but to highlight a couple, we've met with ERCO's neighbors during a February community advisory panel meeting, and most recently, we showed off one of our fuel cell cars at the Blue Ridge Good Neighbor Day just last weekend. One-on-one meetings with both Squamish and Slaywood Nations started early this year, and we are engaged in their formal referral process. The proposed project will bring many benefits to the province and the community. The facility will produce clean fuel to support the deployment of more than 30,000 cars or up to 500 heavy-duty vehicles, and help reduce greenhouse gas emissions in BC. It will generate 50 new jobs, retain employment of 40 ERCO personnel, and generate municipal and provincial tax revenues. The proposed project is aligned with the District of North Vancouver's official community plan and supports BC hydrogen strategy to achieve our climate goals. Liquid hydrogen facilities, like the one that we are proposing, are not new. Liquefaction plants have been in operation since the early 1960s, and today, 14 operate safely in Canada and the US. H-Tech puts safety first always. Many H-Tech employees, including Colin, call the North Shore home. H-Tech is committed to the highest standards of safety, and this facility will be designed using best practices to the most recent codes and standards. Doug McCutcheon, an independent professional engineer, was hired to conduct a quantitative risk assessment. Doug will review his analysis and explain how he concluded that the facility meets the risk criteria from Canada's best practice. I would now like to pass it over to Doug, who will walk us through his key findings.
Doug joining us virtually?
Yes.
Okay, let's just see if Doug is attached to the meeting.
I think he said he would share his presentation.
He is planning to share.
There's someone named Doug on the attendees. I've just given them an invite to come over to the panel. Hang on just a moment, let me just make sure that that's your Doug. Is this Doug McCutcheon that's just joined the panel?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Wonderful.
Welcome. You have about five and a half minutes to present to the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to, to speak to you about this, about this project. Yes, I was engaged. Let me see if my slides are coming up.
Give it another try. We've just cleared out our slides, so go ahead.
Yes, I was engaged to, to do the risk assessment for H-Tech on their hydrogen facility. My background is.
I'm just going to pause you for a sec. I don't see your slides yet.
Okay.
If. You know what we're going to do, Doug, is we're going to, we're going to bring them up on our desktop here. You're just going to need to queue someone from the H-Tech team to switch slides when you want them switched. But just give us a moment, and we'll, we'll get them up on the, on the board here, which the nice thing is they'll be very clear in the transmission, which is better than. Okay, so I see a first slide that says, "H-Tech Hydrogen Project Risk Assessment Summary", and then from here, if you can ask H-Tech people to advance it when you want it advanced.
Thank you. Will, we'll do. If we can go back to the first slide. Yes, thank you. Yes, being engaged to do the risk assessment, I appreciated the opportunity. My background is industrial. I've spent most of my life in the chemical industry and also teaching at the University of Alberta and consulting in this topic of risk management and risk assessments. I did want to also point out that I have been active in the late 80s and through the 1990s in the MIAC organization in helping to, to develop what is now Canada's best practices. And I would like to say this is the criteria that is set in place for both industry and jurisdictions to, to design their, their communities to and conduct their businesses with. Anyways, I'll be quite quick. Next slide, if you wouldn't mind. Thought we would maybe start off by pointing out that the resulting risk of the property line meets those standards, in fact, exceeds the MIAC criteria, which I'll talk about a little bit later. It was noted that this review that I did was also reviewed by a separate third party in order to validate the work, and they did so with, with good, good credible wording in their reports. And I suggested in the outcome of the report that a solid risk management program is, is something that's needed to be implemented in order to go forward to ensure that these risks are maintained at, in a consistent level over, over time. And there's quite a lot of management requirements in, in having these programs in place, and they are actually referred to as best practices in, in our, in our country these days. Next slide. Talk about risk in general. Most people think about risk as a consequence. Not often, I don't think, do people realize that there's a probability component to it as well. And that is, is really where the crux of a risk assessment is, is once you've determined the consequences or the severity of the outcome of whatever could happen, the worst case, in our cases, the probability of that taking place then comes to play. And when we're talking about risk, often the term, the probability terms are used to describe what that risk level is, and sometimes confuses people, I guess. But I wanted to point that out, that very often, people just simply focus risk as a consequence. But in fact, some things can happen, but they don't happen very often at all. So what is an acceptable level of risk? What is the term that we've come up with over time? What is the work of the MIAC organization, and what did they do to, to come to this conclusion? It was pointed out, probably in the 1970s, when there were major industrial accidents happening globally, that the public was a little disturbed by it, wanted to see some safety, I guess, put in place so that their lives would be protected from any industrial incident that could happen. As well, companies were also looking at risk from the point of view that they were liable or potentially liable should something happen. And so both from a company point of view and from a public point of view, there was a need to help address, well, what is acceptable? What is, is going on? And globally, this topic was attacked mainly throughout Europe and the US, and also by the MIAC organization in Canada, which consisted of, I'm trying to remember now, but about 120 people from different walks of life, including industry, federal and provincial governments. Some jurisdictional municipalities were involved, as well as academia, in helping to define what is Canada's best approach. Next slide, if you could. Excuse me. This little drawing basically describes Canada's approach, which is very similar to what goes on in other countries, primarily when we looked at what. Primarily, when we looked at what an acceptable level of risk might be, we focused on what would be acceptable to the public anyways. And a real prime example is, most of us are willing to get on an airplane or get onto a train or a bus and, and hand our lives to the pilot or the bus driver or the engineer of the train and be happy with that and accept that. And, but when you look at the statistics, the probabilities, it shows that the probability, I should say, the risk of a fatality is one chance in a million on an annual basis of us doing just that. And, and so from a societal point of view, that risk level was defined as being the acceptable criteria for building and designing hazardous material facilities, but also for land use planning purposes in communities. So the drawing on the left shows the industrial location on the very left of the slide and basically shows you, if you can see it, that one chance in 10,000 at the property line is the highest, the most risk that could be accepted. Companies need to design and operate their facilities to meet or, or be less than one chance in 10,000 at their property line. Next to that, we've allowed for light and medium industrial activities all the way up to one chance in 100,000 of a risk of a fatality. And then from one chance in 100,000 to one in a million, commercial activities, as well as some single-family residential housing could fit into that zone. And then finally, we get beyond the one in a million risk line, and we're looking at high-density populations, followed by a more sensitive area where three chances in 10 million of a fatality is considered to be acceptable for things like hospitals, seniors' homes, schools.
So Doug, I'm just going to interrupt for a second here. Doug, I'm very much enjoying the primer on risk. It's very helpful to us. We are through the allotted time. I'm just curious, how much more time do you need to present this particular material?
One, one minute, and if you go to the next slide, please.
Okay, thank you.
This is what the summary of the risk assessment shows. For a hydrogen release from a storage tank, a tank truck, and a significant event where all of the material in the tank is, is released through a rupture of the tank, a jet fire that could happen if the hydrogen is released. And we also looked at the nitrogen situation. Should that cause a problem for the public? All of those risks, or I should say, all those hazards were identified, and the risks were determined to be less than one chance in 10,000 at the property line for the H-Tech facility. I think that's basically what I wanted to say. And I hope that, hope that I was helpful.
So to be clear, when it's one in, one in 10,000 at the property line, that is, you're saying that the, the risk is able to be contained within the property boundary at, at an acceptable level? Is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any just wrap-up comments from Colin?
No, we're here for questions and any clarity that's needed, so appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a speakers list that was established at the, before the meeting started. So what's gonna happen is I'm gonna go through the speakers list. Anybody else at the end of the speakers list who wishes to add their comments at that point, we're just gonna do it by simple raising, raising your hands as needed. And also, that stands for the virtual participants as well. I will just remind Council that a link was sent out this afternoon to a Teams chat. If you have questions of a clarifying nature, just write them into the Teams chat. And when we have a bit of a break in the public speakers, we'll do our best to get those addressed by, by our staff or by the applicant. So at this point, the first speaker that signed up to, to speak is Yvette Vera Perez, and joining us virtually. So if we can perhaps move both Yvette and Ronan Chester over. Okay, good. There we go. Fantastic. Yvette Vera Perez, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the public hearing.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me here today. My name, as I said, is Yvette Vera Perez. I am the president and CEO at the Canadian Hydrogen and Fuel Cell Association. We have over 185 members, with a large percentage of them based in British Columbia. Our members export fuel cell products to 42 countries across the world, which account for 65% of the world population. B.C. is known worldwide as the world-leading cluster of hydrogen and fuel cell companies that create innovation and manufacturing jobs and provide us with products and services to decarbonize our economy. I am pleased to offer support for H-Tech and its Clean Hydrogen Liquification Plant Project here in the District of North Vancouver. For the past 20 years, H-Tech founded on the North Shore, has been focused on scaling up hydrogen adoption by developing clean hydrogen fuels and building Canada's first hydrogen station network, as Colin earlier mentioned, and enabling the transportation sector's transition to a low-carbon future. The hydrogen strategy for Canada outlines Canada's strategic priority around developing a low-carbon hydrogen economy, and estimates that up to 30% of energy could be delivered in the form of hydrogen by 2015, reducing greenhouse gas emissions reductions by, greenhouse gas emissions by up to 190 megatons per year, which is more than a quarter of our current emissions levels. Importantly and specifically, the Canadian hydrogen strategy calls for the need to develop strategic hydrogen liquefaction assets Canada-wide by 2030. Further, the B.C. hydrogen strategy cites independent estimates that hydrogen has the potential to reduce annual emissions by 7.2 megatons of carbon dioxide, CO2 equivalent, per year by 2015, which is equal to 11% of B.C.'s 2018 emissions levels. The proposed project will reduce greenhouse gas emissions by up to 141 kilotons of CO2 equivalent annually and will support the rollout of more than 30,000 hydrogen electric vehicles onto Canadian roads. The project will also benefit B.C.'s strong hydrogen and fuel cell cluster of companies by providing hydrogen for their development activities and providing the fuel supply that enables deployment of their products. The facility will convert waste by product hydrogen into clean transportation fuel when consumed in a fuel cell, produces only water and heat at the pipeline. So by capturing a waste stream, this proposed facility will reduce emissions. We know the District of North Vancouver's community plan discusses reducing greenhouse gas emissions to address the climate emergency. An H-Tech project provides a significant opportunity to fuel, to fuel the drive to hydrogen right here in North Vancouver. Supporting H-Tech's project provides the District of North Vancouver a concrete opportunity to put its community plan into action and puts the district in a unique climate leadership position here in Western Canada. Thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of H-Tech's project and rezoning application today.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, Yvette Vera Perez. The next speaker I have is Ronan Chester, also joining us virtually. Ronan Chester, can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Excellent. Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing me to briefly speak. I'm Ronan Chester. I'm the Director of Climate Action and Sustainability Leadership with the Vancouver Fraser Port Authority. The Port Authority, as many of you will probably know, is a federal agency responsible for management of the lands and waters that comprise the Port of Vancouver. The Port of Vancouver is the largest port in the country, and really, it's the largest port on the West Coast of North America by tonnage, handling over $300 billion in cargo annually. Now, when we look at what, what the port is doing, we think about it handling nearly half of Canada's trade outside of North America. And we think about the population growing in the region and the population in the country growing and businesses growing. We know that the demands in the port will only intensify. Now, since 2007, we've had the Northwest Ports Clean Air Strategy. That's a collaboration with the Ports of Tacoma and Seattle. And the most recent version of that strategy, we have the ports all, of course, committed to facilitating net zero emissions by 2050. Now, that's really difficult ambition when we think about the context of the port. But for certain, there is a huge opportunity in the solution pathway in hydrogen. We feel strongly that the challenge of climate action is one of an energy transition in the heavy-duty transportation industry. And that that energy transition will be on the backs of electrons, whether they're in wires or they're in liquid format of hydrogen. Now, today, we have two different projects that we're involved in, that we're very excited in, that also involve H-Tech and other partners. There's one that was announced recently around heavy-duty trucks that will be tested in the coming years. And there's another project that will be globally first with a terminal operator, both testing hydrogen fuel cell technology. I'll point out, in developing these projects and looking at them, originally, the thinking was the hydrogen would be, need to be trucked in from the U.S., from Texas, from hydrogen that's produced from natural gas, because there just isn't a supply of green hydrogen in the market today. That's why a project like this is so incredibly important. It really is the opportunity to kickstart the green hydrogen economy in the region. And certainly, it's a key pathway for heavy-duty commercial transportation and decarbonization. I had the opportunity to work with a lot of different ports around the world, and actually, just the other week was in Rotterdam, joined by Ports of Hamburg, Gothenburg, Antwerp, La Havre, Barcelona, Valencia, L.A. and Long Beach. And I can say, everyone is working on this very dilemma, on this problem right now. And this opportunity of, of seeing a green hydrogen production facility like this, led by companies such as H-Tech, to us is just a really incredible opportunity. There's so much that we can do with it. So notwithstanding that there are so many different factors that need to be considered in a complex project like this, and that careful consideration of those factors is essential. If we look at just the climate action component alone, we see incredible importance and opportunity with this project. We're very excited. And we certainly, as Port Authority, support advancement of it. So I think that's all that I have to say for it. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Next speaker I have is Jed McLean. I don't know, joining us here in person. They should both be able to be turned on there. Yeah, that one's turned on. Yes.
I'll just use one.
There you go. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Great. Well, thank you for this opportunity to speak in favor of this application. My name is Jed McLean. I am the Executive Director of the British Columbia Centre for Innovation and Clean Energy. And what we do at the center is try to find pathways forward to a net-zero future through the support of companies who are developing commercial technologies that will take us there. So, and I'm very pleased to, to support the work of H-Tech. We are engaged in preparing the province for the future, and the energy transition is upon us. And the question is, how do we support those who are blazing the path forward? And is there a path, or is there one path, or are there many paths that will eventually converge on the future? And we believe there are many paths forward. And I would like to speak in particular to some concerns that may exist around the idea that there is already a solution for transportation that is out there, and it's in the form of electric vehicles. Certainly, that is one path, and that path will, will exist and will persist. But the path for hydrogen is really quite an interesting one and quite different. In the center, we work on battery technologies. We work on supporting what we call low-carbon fuels, which look like gasoline or diesel, but which in fact are made from captured carbon from the atmosphere or made from biological sources. And we work on fuel cell technology and hydrogen as a fuel as well. And hydrogen plays a massive role, both as a fuel and also as a feedstock for those synthetic fuels, which are probably what you're going to use to fly aircraft within the future. So whether you think about the future in terms of road transportation, or you think of the future in terms of heating, you think of the future in terms of airline transportation, other mobility applications, hydrogen is going to be there in some form. And we have, in North Vancouver and in Vancouver, we have a world-leading opportunity in the form of taking waste hydrogen from this facility, which is presently being vented to atmosphere, capturing that hydrogen, and then using it in these applications. There are no emissions, and in fact, we are, we are saving emissions by using this hydrogen. H-Tech is a world leader in this technology. H-Tech is a Canadian trailblazer in the development at their own cost as a company. This is not a government organization. It's a private company that has developed a network of refueling stations. That network of refueling stations is enabling this region to become a center for further development. We already have the fuel cell technology here from Ballard, Loop Energy and a few others. But now we have the whole system that can be put together, and H-Tech has pioneered that and is.
Counselor Beck, can I just ask you a question? Did you get punted out when the system reset?
Yes, I did, Your Worship, but I seem to be back online now.
It just came back on automatically?
Yes, it did.
Great. Thank you so much. Just want to make sure that the people attending virtually didn't get tossed into the ether, so that's good to know. Dr. Cost, I understand you have a presentation on thumb drive there, so.
Yes.
Would you like assistance getting that presentation up? Where are you?
I think I'll be able to get it. Good evening, Your Worship and Members of Council. My name is Corey Cost. I've lived in the District almost 50 years, and I've had a good scientific background training, where I spent, after I got my PhD in nuclear physics. After I got a PhD in nuclear physics, I spent 36 years at the Triumph Facility at UBC, mostly doing computer simulations, so programming to simulate various processes comes sort of first nature to me. And my scientific analysis abilities have come in handy on, on some of these issues, like this evening's issue. I sent a rather extensive review of the situation, but I fear that it would take far too long to explain, but it's there for the record. And I want to get down to earth and explain to Council some of the reality in terms of what people can normally understand. Because I tried this on my wife, and it was a dismal failure. So I'll just pick points. Remember that this particular use is a niche process. It's using waste hydrogen. It's an exception to the normal use of or production of hydrogen around the world, which is more than 98% done by inputting fossil fuels. So if you're thinking of the hydrogen process is something that we can scale into the future that way, that's not a path that's accessible to us. The electrolysis of water is a possibility. But again, it's so expensive to produce hydrogen from water. And then compress it, which takes an equal amount of energy. Just to put it in perspective. If I drive my Tesla 100 kilometers, it takes 15 kilowatt hours of energy. 15 kilowatts. But that's the energy required to just compress the hydrogen that's being captured into liquid. I think Tamson Gelpi did not mention in her presentation that this in fact is not a compressed gas. It's a liquid hydrogen. There's a big distinction here. It's very intensive for energy. So from a energy point of view. This is not a sustainable type project unless you can get the cost of electricity to be extremely cheap, two or three cents a kilowatt hour. So last council, I won't go into the details of my report. I put in the reports incidentally distinct bullets, which I think are meant to address safety and climate change aspects. You know, I have no requirement at all because of your mandate to read the other smaller bullets in that report. Now, the rupture of a hydrogen tank is my main concern. And it's the elephant in the room. It's the energy equivalent there of 691 tons of TNT sitting there. That's a huge amount of energy sitting each of those 90,000 gallons or 340,000 liters of liquid hydrogen. The report assumes only 10% of that is spilled, incidentally. To give a a huge range of impact of some 700 meters, which encompasses a lot of area in Maplewood. Yes, the probability is extremely low. It's like 10 to minus seven. But how extensive does something have to be? Even though it's a very low probability that you say 10 to minus seven just doesn't work. In any case, there are other unknowns and uncertainties in the protection of the system beyond what people can do. There are unforeseen things like seismic events. And that will make the other aspect that was mentioned in the report. So I'll come back and and complete our chat in the next five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cost. The next speaker I have is Ed Beckberger. Joining us here in person. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Before I begin, I would like to thank the Honorable Mayor and the council members for giving me the opportunity to speak in support of the hydrogen project at 100 Forrester Drive. My name is Ed Beckberger and I'm the President and CEO of Urco Worldwide. And I'd just like to talk a little bit about Urco and the plant. So for those of you who do not know Urco Worldwide. Urco is a Canadian owned business and we celebrated 125 years of operations last November. From its beginning, Urco has been an industry leader in the manufacture of salt based electrolysis products, mainly sodium chloride and hydrogen. Urco was a founding member of the voluntary responsible care initiative of the chemical industry and it was founded in Canada. Which requires all member companies to work together to look for ways to continually improve our performance in all aspects of health, safety and environmental performance. Urco conducts its business with honesty and integrity. And we treat all people with dignity and respect and support the communities that are around our operations. Now regarding the plant here in North Vancouver. The North Vancouver plant has operated safely since 1957, over 65 years. The North Vancouver plant has 40 dedicated full time employees. With established safety, environmental and management and community outreach programs. We are very serious about safety and we are proud to say that the site received a WorkSafe BC process safety audit rating of best in class. Our plant operates and generates up to 5.6 million kilograms of green hydrogen a year. As a byproduct to the existing sodium chlorine manufacturing process. This would be equivalent to a new 40 megawatt water hydrogen electrolysis plant. Currently, the majority of the byproduct hydrogen gas is not captured and therefore wasted. It is a strategic objective of Urco to capture value from this underutilized hydrogen energy. And at the same time, improve our competitive profile. Importantly, this hydrogen is a byproduct of an existing manufacturing process. Providing a faster path to market since we are ready to make the hydrogen. Urco has worked closely with H-Tech since 2009, attempting to find economic ways to capture this hydrogen. And to recover a carbon free energy source to be used here in the lower mainland. We fully support the approach that H-Tech are proposing and we're here today to show that support. Thank you very much for your time.
The next speaker I have is George McKay or Mackay, joining us here in person. Welcome. You have five minutes to address the hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council, George McKay. At 2728 Dalton Highway. So in the vicinity of this project. Approximately, I guess, maybe 700 meters as the previous speaker mentioned, if that's correct. So I would say at this stage, I'm not necessarily for or against the proposed rezoning, but I'm here at the public hearing, try to learn more. And clearly hoping that you all as council will make the right decision for us and for this project. So some things that I do think at this point is I was at the public house or whatever it was at the school. I think remember you were there. I did mention H-Tech. I'd like to see copy the consultant report. I don't think that's been made public. If it's been made public since that date, I apologize. But I appreciate that a very general summary was given of the report. I don't see why we can't get the report if there's particular information of it, this proprietary secret of H-Tech or Urco. Perhaps that could be redacted, but I'd like to see the key findings. Not that I'm necessarily a scientific person. I realize there's been a peer review, but I don't mind reading the report. I'd like to see what's in it, especially because it affects our direct community. Through no scientific process of my own, this Googling, there have been explosions at hydrogen plants. When they happen, it's really bad. The one example I could find, I think it was in New Jersey or it was in somewhere in the US, I sent to H-Tech. Not criticize them, but I didn't get any direct response as to why whatever happened there wouldn't happen at this location. I'm certainly hoping or entrusting that if it is approved, we're talking about a very low probability of any major event happening. As a layman, I was somewhat concerned by Mr. McCutcheon's comment that maybe I heard it wrong, that there's a one in 10,000, one chance per 10,000 fills of some kind of event. That sounds very risky to me. I could be wrong because I think there's going to be daily fills of the trucks that come in and out of this location. So again, just like the more information, right? Perhaps the risk tolerance is low. I am very interested generally in the area and perhaps there could be more information given what the long term plans are for H-Tech. If it's approved, are they going to further expand? I'd like to know more about what's happening at Chemtrade. Maybe this is information that's already in the public domain that I don't have. I think I've heard that they're going to be ceasing the production of chlorine, chlorine, sorry, at that location. If so, that'd be great because I think that's something that's in 30 years in the making. If so, if that's closing down, I could have that wrong. What's the plan for that property? In a higher, from a higher point of view, I'd like to know what's the not just for this project, what is the big picture plan for this area? Is it going to continue as industrial? If so, are we moving more to light industrial? If we're approving this, is that part of that continuum or are we doubling down on more medium and heavy industrial if we approve this? So again, I don't have a completely fixed view on this. I like the fact in a lot of ways that Maplewood is a mixed community. It's got a mix of industrial, residential, other uses. So just like to see if this is on the right path, I suppose. Or are we kind of going back in the wrong direction if we're if we're approving this project? And those, I think those are all my comments. So thanks very much.
Thank you. So just before you go. I'll do my best to address some of some of those issues. So yes, the McCutcheon report is part of the additional information package that is available.
Okay.
And so is the peer review of it. I believe when the statement was made in the introduction, it was that there have been 15,000 fills so far without incident.
Right.
And I think that's referring to just vehicle fills at the filling station. Is that correct? I'm looking for columns by H-Tech alone. That's okay. So without incident. So it wasn't suggesting that one in 10,000 would have an incident that so far they've had 15,000 without incident.
Okay.
And then I'm trying to remember you had another point.
About Chemtrade in the plan, it's unrelated to this project.
So Chemtrade, I believe, and maybe I can go to Ms. Yan for any further comment. But I believe the agreement is that they're going to cease the production of liquid chlorine at the site. They will still be producing salts and solids at the site, but they obviously don't become gaseous in any dangerous level. And so it will significantly reduce the MIAC guidelines around the facility when they cease the production of liquid chlorine. Is that accurate, Ms. Guppy, Ms. Yan?
Yes, that's correct.
So that's their intention is to just cease the liquid production. There will still be chlorine products at the facility. They just won't present anywhere near the same risk outside of the facility that liquid does.
Okay, great. Yeah, good. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so that is the last person that spoke up ahead of time and put their head, their hand up earlier. So at this point, I'm going to see if anybody else would like to add their comments for a first time. Anybody else a first time? Okay, so we're just going to pause there for a second. So members of council, I know you submitted a couple of questions to staff, maybe three or so. Four, maybe. Wondering staff, do you need more time to answer those questions or can the applicant assist with the answers?
Thank you. I think a lot of them are directed at both Doug McCutcheon because they had to do with risk. And very detailed questions about hydrogen. So I will pass them over to the applicant for the most part. Are you guys ready to go or would you like a couple of minutes to just kind of dig into them a bit more? Okay.
Okay. So if you can come up to the microphones, that would be great. And again, I know we're we're pitching some pretty specific questions at you on the spot with no warning, but it would really help people make their comments tonight if possible.
No problem at all. We talk hydrogen 24/7.
And just to be clear, Doug McCutcheon is also on the panel part, so he can hear your comments and we can go to him if something requires his assistance. So.
That's great. I think we'll throw a few questions his way after we address the ones that we will cover ourselves.
Thank you.
Shall we start with what is the impact on the environment of the current discharge of hydrogen into the atmosphere by Urco? The first question is, what is the impact on the environment of the current discharge of hydrogen into the atmosphere by Urco?
So hydrogen is not considered to be a pollutant or a greenhouse gas. And so the emissions of hydrogen are not regulated. So there's not considered to be an environmental impact. But I guess you could look at it as as a wasted energy source. And that's why we're trying to capture it.
Okay, the second question is, does the risk assessment account for a major earthquake?
And we direct that question to Doug if he could respond. That'd be appreciated.
Doug McCutcheon, can you hear me?
I can, and thank you for the opportunity. Through you, Mayor, the earthquake scenario is considered to be such a low priority or probability, excuse me, that it is not considered as part of the of the risk assessment.
Okay.
And then while we have Doug on the line, I'll skip down to a couple of the other questions that relate to Doug. Unless H-Tech, did you want to add anything on the earthquake front?
I guess I would add that BC obviously has a volume and quite strict standards as they relate to seismic requirements. And all of those requirements will be considered and incorporated into the design of the facility as we pass through, you know, preliminary design, detailed design and on to construction.
Okay, then we also have a question. If there was a tank breach, what would be the impact on the surrounding lands and people?
Good question. We actually took a look at that from the first first hazard analysis and determined that the actual incident would remain on site. Hydrogen is is a liquid at a very, very low temperature of minus 250 degrees centigrade, somewhere in that area. And as soon as it's released from the vessel, it would form vapor cloud. The second point is, is hydrogen being very light, in fact, the lightest of all elements. It basically would rise quickly into the atmosphere. Second scenario was the boiling liquid expanding vapor one, which talks about the issue of the tank actually failing due to flame or fire nearby. The result of that scenario shows that the risk level as well is contained on site. The impact of the very worst case scenario, as Dr. Cost pointed out, could be as far as 700 meters from the site. Likelihood of that is 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 very low, but that was also looked at.
Ms. Guppy, any additional questions?
Yes, let me just turn back to the right. And first of all, in terms of the tank breach question, did that answer the question or was there anything further you'd like?
Ask it to be nice and loud into the microphone, just so we can all hear the question.
Want me to be nice and loud?
Oh, Tamson, sorry, Ms. Guppy, to be nice and loud. I actually could barely hear your response there. So your question.
My apologies. Just wanted to follow up to see whether that was answering the question or whether you'd like any further discussion.
Oh. On the question was, sorry, the question referring to is if there was a tank breach, what would the impact on the surrounding lands and people be? Did that answer your question?
What kind of impact does that have like on the employees that are working right there or up to the 700 meters on people?
Mr. McCutcheon, can you speak to how damaging that would be in the worst case scenario? I believe that was proposed by Dr. Cost. I'm assuming that it means quite catastrophic failure of the facility and probably damage to and injury to anybody within the zone. There in that least likely scenario, but most serious scenario.
The the very worst case scenario is one that we start the whole, the whole process of the risk assessment with. And then we go forward into looking at more realistic scenarios. But if you consider the 700 meter distance. And should that event ever happen where there's one chance in 10 million that it would. The impact is a shock wave. Like explosion creating a shock wave. And that 700 meters is 1.0 PSI pressure shock wave. And that is sufficient to start to impact building structures where potential issues around injuries and damage to people. issues around injuries and damage to people could happen anywhere going towards the facility from that point on, one could start expecting fatalities. Now, again, the the area is zoned for heavy industry, which means that there's not very many people involved in that in that part of the of the of the of the zone. And the other one is, is that most of the people that are there understand the activities around heavy industry and through their own emergency planning activities will likely take action to to help themselves. But undoubtedly, so an event like that would cause some fatalities. And but unlikely it would cause any fatalities to the public.
Mr. McCutcheon, it's very, very hard to, I think, compare those examples of risk. I think I had explained to me once that ten to the minus five is about the level of risk that a person has if they're part of the driving public in the community, the chance that they would die in a given year. And ten to the minus six is the likelihood that somebody who's staying at their house might die in a given year. And ten to the minus seven, as you say, is is one ten million approximately chance. So much lower risk of that occurring than than the others by an order of magnitude. Is that? Do you have a better example to explain the risk at ten to minus seven? I mean, a we obviously have gas stations throughout the community that present an explosion risk. What are the chances of a gas station in the community just exploding in any given year versus this facility potentially having an incident like that in any given year?
I guess I don't have any data to be able to speak to that, but I would suggest that as a society, we're more than happy to to accept gas stations in our communities. And if we think about it, how many of those gas stations have actually had incidents that it would make us want to have them moved elsewhere? Not very many. The result is, is that we still, as a society, are willing to accept gas stations in our neighborhoods. I would suggest that the probability or the risk of a gas station in our neighborhood is is easily one chance in a million and maybe even closer to one chance in ten million of a of a major catastrophe happening. And I go back to that example of getting on an airplane and having the pilot have control of your life as being one chance in a million as an acceptable level for us as a society. I think hopefully that helps to answer your question.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's just it's a it's a complicated affair, which is why I appreciated the primary risk at the front end. We, the council sometimes gets briefed on these kinds of risks when you deal with natural hazard flows and and earthquakes and others. We have to talk in terms of risk, but the general public doesn't typically. And it can be quite difficult for people to quantify the risk. So I appreciate the additional commentary. Ms. Guppy, do you have another question?
Yes, there are additional questions, but there was a paper, and I think that was your question about the levels of risk. Is that now being answered while we still have Doug on the line? Okay, thank you. Good. Okay, in that case, we can turn on to turn back to one of the earlier questions, which was how many megajoules of electricity does it take to liquefy one kilogram of hydrogen? Google says an inefficient facility would be about one hundred megajoules of per kilogram and a large efficient facility is about forty megajoules per kilogram. I almost feel like this is a jeopardy question. It's great.
I won't answer in the form of a question. But we we do think of it in slightly different units, so forgive me, but essentially the liquefier will requires about ten kilowatt hours per kilogram to liquefy the hydrogen into a project.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
And the next question is, are there other examples in North America near residential areas? And I'm just for clarification, that's other examples of hydrogen plants?
I can I can maybe answer that in a broader context too. So as was mentioned before, we're probably adding about four percent of the capacity of liquid hydrogen in North America. So meaning there is roughly twenty times as majority produced and it's been there for fifty years. It's what's used to propel the space shuttle. It's what's used to make glass. It's used at pretty much all the big power plants to produce electricity. It's used to run forklifts at Costco warehouses, Amazon warehouses. It's used in a whole variety of other chemical processes and a lot of that is delivered to liquid and they just started last year, or not last year, sorry, three years ago, delivering it to fueling stations, liquid in variety of stations in California in highly densely populated areas. So they they drive these liquid tanks that are exactly the same as we will be using in highways. Hundred, you know, kilometers an hour, they cross railway tracks, they go to downtown areas, they drop off their hydrogen and return back to the central fueling station. And this has been going on for many, many years around North America and other places globally. Typically, these factories are have a variety of different areas and people around them. I haven't done an in-depth study if they're beside residential areas or not. But certainly their product that's moved around leaves their their gates and goes under transport dangers, good areas as as dictated and allowed across North America and and globally.
Are there any other facilities like the one that you're contemplating here in North America?
Yeah, there is one in Megha, Quebec. It's exactly the same, pretty much the same size. It's been operating safely for, I believe, twenty, twenty-five years.
Is it near a residential community such as the one that we're looking at?
Yeah, I have not measured the hits. It's it's certainly more rural than this one. I'd have to check how how close it is to to houses. But I'm sure a number are in in the States and, you know, it's it's yeah, out of the twenty odd facilities, we'd have to do a measurement. We haven't done that.
There is one that we're familiar with in the US and it's actually, we we checked the distance because it's a very similar urban area that it's close to. There's one outside of Chicago, which is, you know, very close in proximity to the urban area that we are to Maplewood neighborhood. We could provide more details if you like.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Guppy?
And the last question I have is what would be the increase in truck traffic per week to and from the site?
Currently, ERCO has about eighty or so truck movements going out of their facility. Each, we will be producing about fifteen tons of liquid on a daily basis and each liquid tanker holds about four four tons. So we see, you know, three to five truck movements being added on a daily basis from the facility. So a very small number overall.
Let me just clarify that. So the the product will be moved off the site by truck, not by rail?
That's correct. Yeah, hundred. Currently, the plan is to have a hundred percent of the liquid trucked off of the site.
Would it ever, would it ever expand to rail?
We don't currently have plans to expand it to rail.
But it could be transported.
Yeah, absolutely. It's certainly done today. Yeah. And that completed the council questions at this time. I did, I I'm the one who asked the the ten kilowatt hours per kilogram question. And I guess what I'm trying to get at is oh, sorry, the handwritten question that I handed you. The question was
Risk.
Oh, it made the trip.
What the meaning of risk by being one in ten thousand?
It's perfectly clear.
Just preparing that, I was just gonna ask, the reason why I asked the question of ten kilowatt hours per kilogram
Right.
is I think in our first meeting, I said, it sounds like you're a very thirsty customer. And what I was trying to get at is with over five million kilograms produced, that means over fifty million kilowatt hours of electricity that would have to be consumed in the site in order to be able to produce that much per year. And I guess that's a tremendous amount of energy. That's like a measurable portion of our hydroelectric dams capacity.
Well, I mean, it is a lot of energy to liquefy hydrogen. The one thing I would say is to liquefy, it's about ten kilowatt hours per kilogram. If we were producing it with electrolysis, it's about fifty-five kilowatt hours per kilogram and then you have to liquefy it on top of it. So it's actually the most energy efficient way to capture the waste and then just add the energy to liquefy it. ERCO does use a lot of electricity in their sodium chloride manufacturing. I think it's about sixty megawatts of of power that goes to the ERCO facility. Site C dam is eleven hundred megawatts. Somewhere just to, so it's a lot. Our facility, just from a power feed perspective, will use about fifteen megawatts. And so we've been working with BC Hydro. We've run a system impact study with them to make sure that upstream of our facility, they have enough capacity through the transmission lines to provide that fifteen megawatts. And they've confirmed that they do. They're very engaged in the project and working with us on it.
Appreciate the clarity on it. I only know enough about the science to get me into trouble. So I appreciate that. Counselor Hanson.
What is the meaning of the risk being one in ten thousand? Is this a statement that a mishap is likely to occur one time in ten thousand years of operation?
I think probably Doug is the best one to answer that question.
Mr. McCutcheon, can you respond to that? If you, did you hear the question?
Yeah, thank you again. This is the probability of a fatality happening over an entire year at that point to someone who's standing there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It's all about a number and it's about a number that we can design our facilities to in order to meet the criteria that's been set out by the MIAC work. So it's one chance, I should say, it's one chance in ten thousand of a fatality on a yearly basis.
And years and the probability is that there'll be one mishap in that ten thousand years causing a fatality.
I'm gonna probably bend your words in saying it's a probability, it's a risk associated with a person standing in that location constantly for an entire year. And the likely and the probability that they will be fatally injured from an industrial accident. Let me take a look at this.
With the distinction being that if you do it as you've calculated over ten thousand years, then it's a certainty to have occurred one time. And the way he's calculating it is that each year there's a new chance of that occurring one in ten thousand rate. And so it's not an eventuality. It's a recalculation every single year of the risk of it happening in that one year.
For sure.
Equally, when you go out to the one in a million and then there was point three and in ten million on these different bands of risk, again, it's operation for on a full-time basis and these are probabilities per year.
Correct. They are on an annual probability of the fatality. That's right.
Thank you.
All right. So what I'm going to do now is I'm going to just check back in with the public. I don't know, maybe something's provoked question or comment from members of the public, but would anybody like to address the hearing a first or second time? Dr. Cost, actually, if I can to come back down for his second five-minute presentation. Welcome. You have an additional five minutes to speak to the hearing.
I understand these risks. Yes, the risks one in ten thousand means that one person standing there for ten thousand years would go poof. Okay, but one person isn't standing there. There could be hundreds. Each of them have exactly the same risk. Okay, so you got a hundred people standing there for thousand years, those hundred go as well. So it does depend on how many people are in the area. Which brings up another topic. In the construction, there might be fifty people employed for the construction of this facility. But the actual number that run it is five. Five are only present, you know, during the day to run the thing and not even notice anybody at night. So it's not an intensive employer as such. I didn't do the scaling up, incidentally, if you look at page twenty-six of Doug's report. It assumes in that scenario of the boiling liquid expansion vapor explosion, bleve, it's called. It only assumes in the formula a ten percent of the product is involved. Okay. Now, there's a total tonnage, only ten percent gets into into the explosive situation. And that resulted in a one pound per square inch, one PSI over every square inch of your body at a range of seven hundred and thirteen meters. That's a long ways. Now, scale this up to twenty percent and you get eight hundred and ninety-nine meters or even the ridiculous one, let's say a hundred percent went. It then would be fifteen hundred and thirty-six meters. That encompasses everything everywhere that you can probably even into lower land. There'll be a lot of windows go. Okay, but a hundred percent is, I don't know which is the most probable. And I don't know why ten percent was chosen. It's an industry standard of some sort, but it's it may not be reality and what really is going to take place. It's not the worst case scenario. The worst case scenario is one hundred percent. Things out to fifteen hundred and thirty-six meters. Okay. You asked a question, what about higher pressure? And I included the table of all the different higher pressures and how lethal they can be. Come at three pounds or four pounds per square inch and then knock over walls and whatever you've got. So I'd like to see a little bit more the data and what the formula looks like. As you scale scale upward down the pounds per square inch or the lethality factor. Flying is becoming safer all the time. And the one in the million, we no longer accept one in the million. And the standards of the world is changing or changing as we go on. We ask more for safety all the time. So at the end, at the end, it's a safety, it's no, you know, trade-off between safety and money. Sorry, as crass as that. Now, I did want to mention in just a few seconds about one page is the report that I had and that is the one hundred and twenty megajoules is correct per kilogram. And there's twenty-four thousand kilograms, that's almost three million megajoules, which is equivalent to, after you do the translation, six hundred and ninety-one tons of TNT, which is what took place in Beirut. You saw the pictures of Beirut, I hope. And that was somewhere between three hundred and eleven hundred tons. So it's midway between. And and the Halifax explosion of nineteen seventeen, more than seventeen, more than a hundred years ago. Ammonium nitrate in that case was was largest non-nuclear explosion was about two point nine kilotons of TNT. But I'm still scared about the six hundred and ninety-one tons of TNT sitting in one place. No matter how safe you keep it, it's just sitting in your backyard. Our backyard. And that's my problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first? Okay, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first or second time?
Um, Mayor Little, is it possible to respond?
Uh, you're you, I would appreciate your expert feedback on the matter. Uh, yes, you can respond.
Um, to Dr. Cost's question around
Uh, to be clear for the record, this is Doug McCutcheon uh speaking again. Go ahead, Doug.
Uh, thank you again. Um, to Dr. Cost's question about uh the ten percent only being involved in the um in the explosion. Um, this is uh research data that has been uh done through industry and again, the uh process safety world and risk world. But uh it includes actual tests and actual uh professional peer-reviewed uh research papers on the topic uh that the ten percent number is indeed uh determined to be the right number to use. Um, the other point is uh uh there is a difference when you're talking about uh an explosion of a vapor cloud, and you're talking about an explosion of a solid material uh like ammonium nitrate. Uh, I don't think you can compare the two uh in this circumstance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I think uh you know, to those of us that aren't experts in this field, uh, it sounds like if ten percent of the product is involved at those kinds of yields, then one hundred percent of the product is involved at those yields because it's going to blow up the whole place, is it not? Uh, maybe I'm misunderstanding that. Uh, Mr. McCutcheon, are are you?
Uh, if I may, uh
Please.
when the in, when the um material is released from the vessel and the ignition of it happens, uh, the ignition takes place not to the entire cloud, but to a portion of the cloud uh creating uh, I guess, a shock wave, a a an overpressure wave, but also causing mixing of the fuel with the air. And the turbulence involved doesn't uh uh doesn't lend itself to all of it being consumed at once. Uh, once the explosion happens, uh, then it's usually followed by a fire, which burns up the rest of the material. And in this case, we're thinking that ten percent would be in the explosion, ninety percent would be in the fire.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so uh I'll check back in again. Uh, do we have any additional questions that have come from the council at this point? Okay, so I'm going to ask, uh, would anybody else like to address the hearing for a first, second, or third time? Dr. Cost, you are welcome. And this is, but just to be clear, this is the last opportunity for a five-minute presentation, Dr. Cost.
Uh, sometimes the extensive reading of all the literature, and I think I read some forty or fifty of papers on this issue. All of this, and it mentions this ten percent rule. But it cautioned, it said this only applied because tests had only been done on small volumes. And it's when you scale up to large volumes, the picture changes completely. Much larger fractions get involved. So I caution the whole idea of using ten percent. These are enormous amounts of material here. So if you need to consult again with uh an independent person on this aspect and read the literature, I I think you might be surprised at at what I just said. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. And like you said, I I only understand this at a cursory level. I'd my uh my physics teacher, Mr. Hoofline, would give us examples of where you'd have to calculate how far his mother-in-law would be blasted into space with a particular set of explosives. And so it's only marginally useful for calculating these kinds of things. Is it entertaining teacher either way? Um, okay, so um, so what happens at this point then is to officially exhaust the speaker's list on a on a public hearing. I'm gonna say something that's a little, looks a little archaic, but I'm gonna say three times, uh, would anybody else like to speak? So for a first time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? For a second time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? For a third and final time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Hearing none, uh, I'm going to suggest that the the speaker's list has been exhausted. And I'm gonna look to a member of council for a motion. Counselor Muir, you have a motion?
I move that this hearing be
There was a new question from council to staff. Let me go to Ms. Guppy.
Thank you. Um, yes, we've got a new question, but I think this is one probably for Doug McCutcheon again. And the question is, can we get a scaled version of amount of product in explosion? And I am not actually sure I'm I'm quite understanding the question. Did you want to expand a little bit on that?
Uh, Mr. McCutcheon, can you hear? Uh, sorry, Counselor Forbes, you were just gonna clarify that question?
Yeah.
Um, it's a follow-up to what Dr. Cost was asking for. He wanted to see a uh a larger percentage of the product that actually was involved in the the explosion and not the fire scaled up, you know, instead of ten percent.
So I think, yeah, so Dr. Cost's question was, uh, the ten percent number was figured based on a small sample. When you're talking about a bulk sample that you would have stored at a facility that produces hydrogen, um, have you looked at what an appropriate calculation for uh explosive material would be out of that type of a facility, or you're sticking to the ten percent?
Uh, thank you again. In terms of developing a report, you um you have to refer to um, I guess, quality work that's been done. Reference material, peer-reviewed material, material that has been generated by experts globally around how to uh do these calculations. And this calc- this particular calculation is just one of those. It's peer-reviewed. It's one that's been accepted globally as an approach to understanding explosions. Um, to go forward and do, I guess, what uh what has been requested would would be um a little bit of a challenge because uh it would probably require uh quite a lot of, um, I guess, connection with people that are in the business and the in the risk management business to have them evaluate uh the more than ten percent. If you took and put twenty percent into the equation, yeah, we can do that, and we can make that number uh different. Um, however, uh, it will not be um one that one would call an acceptable approach. It would not be, would not meet the peer-reviewed data that we use for making these calculations.
Thank you very much. I do.
Yeah.
Just in case, in case someone was uh decided that they had a question now because of that response. And so for a first time, well, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Or a second time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? For a third and final time, would anybody else like to address the hearing? Seeing none, I believe we've we've exhausted the list. We have no further questions from council. Look to council for a motion.
Uh, I move that we return, we close this uh hearing and return this bylaw to council.
Thank you very much. It's been moved and seconded. It'll call the question on the matter. All those in favor. Contrary-minded motion carries. Look to you clerk for, uh, do you have a recommended date for when this matter would would return to a regular meeting of council?
Uh, thank you for your worship. At this time, we do not have it scheduled. However, it is likely to be in the fall.
Likely to be in the fall, so we'll have to notify when that is
Uh, likely September eleventh is the first regular meeting of council after the summer break.
September eleventh will be the date for that. Okay. All right. Um, so at this point, to what closure means on that subject matter is that the council's not permitted to receive additional information on that subject. Um, and uh they'll be making their decision based on what has been conveyed to them so far. And so we ask that everybody abstain from uh approaching council members to discuss the subject matter. Uh, they will have to uh stop that conversation and uh and they're not allowed to receive that additional information. If you have any questions about those regulations, you can talk to the clerk. Uh, at this point, what I'm gonna actually recommend is that we have a a two or three-minute stretch break. Uh, as my friend, the mayor of the city of North Vancouver, as a community health nurse would say, uh, sitting is the new smoking, and so everybody get up, have a stretch, and we'll resume in about three minutes' time. There are washrooms in the hallway, uh, and uh if you want, there's some water around as well.